Okay, we're just about ready to start. We have a quorum. It's seven o'clock. If I just, I'll open the meeting as soon as Ginny sets foot in the room. Okay, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may do so on Acton TV's YouTube channel. That's found at the top of our agenda. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Acton TV website at actontv.org. Welcome, everybody. So, public participation is the first item on our agenda. Per school committee policy, BEDH, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes. Public participation will only take place at this time during our meeting. Speakers are welcome to speak about anything that is either on or off the agenda, but at this time only. And as a reminder, the committee does not typically respond to comments during public meeting, sorry, during public participation. And like I said, we're going to hold public participation for three minutes per person. Gary's already smiling at me, so Gary, would you like to be the first person up? All right, give me a second here.
It's on now.
Perfect.
Gary Kushner, Boxborough Finance Committee. Number one, please change your guidelines. I'll leave it very short. I took a look at the energy report. And I thought it was very comprehensive, but what I couldn't find in there, and maybe I missed it, was the differences with the Boardwalk Campus Energy proposed savings. What that does for the region. And if it was in there, I missed it then, but it'd be nice to understand if we get the full savings that we're expecting from a net zero energy facility. Is that, you know, what's the savings? Or at least proposed savings. So, you know, I'd like to see that in the future if possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Hello, okay. Hi, I'm Alex Swa. I'm a junior at the high school. And I'm a member of Resource Force. A few, several months ago, Resource Force sent a resolution, and I'm here to remind you again that we would very much like you to consider this resolution and pass it. We want to emphasize the fact that this resolution is very high level. It's just a commitment to do something and take action against climate change in the future. And it's not a commitment to put in money right now. And of course, we understand with all the budget stuff that that's going, it's going to be very difficult to do all of this. But we just want to emphasize that this is a commitment for the future and that it's imperative that we take action against climate change immediately.
Thanks, Alex.
John Peterson, Six Jackson Drive. So I will stand up, you know, in support of Gary's request that you change the public participation policy. And as long as we're talking about policy, I'll also remind everybody that the current reserve level in the END is not consistent with your E&amp;D policy. And that should be something that the committee addresses. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? Okay, thank you. Onto the superintendent's update. Peter.
All right, thanks, Adam. Good evening, everyone. You know, first, I want to just start with a few congratulations. You know, we just held our annual 20-year chair ceremony, which is a really big deal here at AB. It goes back decades. But what we try to do here is celebrate our staff at different levels during their career with us. So, you know, obviously, when staff are hired, that's really exciting, and we have an opportunity to introduce them. When they hit year four and they gain something called professional teacher status, which is the modernized version of what people might think of as tenure. They get a, we have a pen ceremony for them in front of the whole staff. At 20 years, they actually get a chair from us. And that's something that we partner with the ABEA on to do. And it's just a really fun night because we go out and all their colleagues get a chance to talk about them. And, you know, their relationships with them over 20 years, so that's great. And we're actually going to do something a little new. We had done a retirement ceremony over the last, you know, number of, probably a couple decades. But over the last few years, it's been dwindling in terms of the number of retirees who were choosing to attend. And so it's not proving to be cost-effective for what we're doing. And so we're going to switch to something a little different. And on June 6th, we're actually going to host a reception here before the school committee meeting. And then invite our retirees to come to the school committee meeting and actually recognize them with you as kind of a thank you to the community. So we will be sending out kind of a save the date to you if you haven't already received something from Julie. But we'll do just a small reception out in the lobby. And then, you know, probably very first thing, you know, that we do in the meeting before even public participation, hopefully, is get our retirees in, congratulate them, thank them, and then they can be on their way for the night. So, a couple of updates there. We'll certainly be sending out lots of celebrations, lots of great things. We had a student who won first place in, you know, a national singing competition. We have had a teacher, Carrie Cusick over at Blanchard, who is now a finalist in the Goyan Literacy Fellowship, so that's very exciting. Gates just celebrated their annual robotics night last Friday night, March 15th. And then we had a number of art students recognized statewide for some of their work, along with Ms. Knight over at Gates, so we're very excited about that. Also, really, really big day for our high school student athletes. We just had National Signing Day over at the high school. I feel badly this year I was in another meeting I couldn't avoid, but that's really exciting to get to see the kids go and commit to schools and just kind of the, that next journey in educational athletics. So we're really proud of all the kids who were able to do that. We have about 12 kids, so it was, you might know some of these students. Matty Smith was going to play softball in college. Lucas DeRosa for football. Jackson Chandler for football. Lyle Siskanzi for football as well. Colin Robinson is going to be track and field. Actually, here's, there's a bunch of track and fields people. Christopher Adamcheck, Anthony Cronin. Kristoff Ossman-Chai, A.J. Reyna, Noah Stegerman. Kyle Werner, Ivan Yan, Zachary Paridos, and Elizabeth Latham. So that is a lot of track students. That is obviously a testament to the success of the track program over the years. So congratulations, everyone there. Just as a reminder, we continue to update our FY25 budget page, so please steer people there if they have questions on the budget. The, you know, the most recent video that we have up there is a description of what's in the A and B budgets, just so people have a good understanding of what is and isn't in each of those budgets. We will be sending home some safety information around the solar eclipse to families. We are not modifying our school schedule because of the solar eclipse. Just like every other day of the year, it's not safe to look at the sun for long periods of time. No, that really is the message, like, you know, and people think it's a solar eclipse thing. It's actually not. It's a sun thing. We should not look at the sun. It's not good for our eyes. I think there's more temptation during a solar eclipse because of curiosity. But I think we just want to make sure we're driving home the message, just like every other day, don't stare at the sun. We actually have, for all of our elementary and middle school students, we have glasses that we're giving them because it does take place at dismissal. And so a number of our schools have actually, you know, engaged parent volunteers to help create some, you know, fun kind of face coverings, things that go with the glasses so they fit properly. But we're certainly going to be stressing that. Our STEAM coaches actually have done a great job at the elementary level. They've actually prepared lessons for all of the elementary teachers to be able to teach about what a solar eclipse is and provide some of the safety information for our elementary school students. So I'm just trying to be proactive about that. Certainly, it's exciting. It's fun. We want our kids to know about it, and we want them to be safe. We have another Cartwheel Care webinar coming up, and that is going to be helping our teens and pre-teens thrive. Parenting Strategies for the Adolescent Years, that's coming up on April 3rd. We will send out information on the link. We also have a couple of leader searches going on right now. We are in the finalist round for an athletic director position for our high school in Junior High. We had one of the finalists in for a full day yesterday. We had both finalists in for a kind of a community forum last night, where they had an opportunity to answer some questions from the community. And then our second finalist is actually spending the full day tomorrow. So excited to draw that to a conclusion. We've sent survey, survey feedback forms out to anyone who's participated in all the various rounds and, you know, looking forward to completing that search successfully. Both candidates are experienced athletic directors and bring, you know, just differing, but really unique skillsets to what they're doing. The other leadership search is for Assistant Superintendent of Schools. That one's a little bit different because it ends with a recommendation of a candidate from the superintendent, but the actual final appointment is a vote of the school committee. So we are, we just finished the screening round yesterday. We'll be announcing finalists tomorrow afternoon. We'll be sending out the information to the community around our finalists and making those announcements. We then have a series of focus groups going over the course of next week to meet with each of the candidates and be able to provide more feedback on that. And then I'm in the process now of checking all the references and hopefully making a decision, you know, by either late next week or possibly early the next week. But you should anticipate that on April 4th in the school committee packet, you'll see a resume, cover letter, and a recommendation for appointment of one of those candidates. So just to preview what's coming up there. And then final announcement of the night. If you are around on Saturday, Adam and I are going to be doing a community coffee over at KJ's Cafe in Acton. Just as an opportunity to be out in the community and answer questions around the budget. That is going to be at 9:00 AM on Saturday, so please feel free to pass the word. Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions for Peter on his update? Do I really have to get up for a 9:00 AM meeting? It's all right. I'll be there. KJ's Cafe, it's in Acton, on Great Road, next to the Trader Joe's. Okay, thank you, Peter. Up next is Kate Crosby is going to give us a presentation on the Boardwalk Campus Energy Performance. Going to get an update on that, so Peter's getting the slides up. Welcome, Kate.
So before Kate jumps in, I'll just give you a little background.
Okay. We'll let you get to your seat, get your microphone on first.
Thank you. So I don't know how many of you know Kate Crosby. She is the district's energy manager. We are fortunate in Acton-Boxborough because not many school districts have a dedicated energy manager. And this was, you know, foresight a long time ago by the school district to think of a position like this because she saves us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on utility bills, electricity. She is out in front of working with our student groups around climate change action plans, advocacy, helping our students think through things. She has done a lot of work in trying to reduce the district's carbon footprint. She is as knowledgeable as a person you're going to get in this field, and we're so fortunate to have her in the district. She has been leading a lot of work over at Boardwalk Campus. And trying to get that building to perform in its first years is an all-encompassing job, to the point where she's had to actually deprioritize some of the traditional roles she plays in the district just to be able to focus on that. But Kate has done an amazing job working with all of the contractors and architects involved in the project. And I think what you're going to see is some of the fruits of that labor tonight in the energy performance. So I'll turn it over to you, Kate, and thank you for everything you're doing.
I'll try to live up to half of that. Thank you, Peter, for the introduction. And I am delighted to be here tonight, and I'm even more delighted to be bringing you really lovely news about the new building. This was a commitment that, a choice that the building committee made in the summer of 2019 when they were choosing between a gas-fired, high-efficiency gas-fired building or an all-electric geothermal building. And at that time, the geothermal was slightly more expensive to build, but cheaper to operate. And they had analyses in front of them that indicated that those, that difference would wash out over time. And with a little encouragement from advocates, the building committee selected the all-electric geothermal option. And we've been very proud that the building was built on time and on budget. And it is a, it's, it's a new, it's, it was a new experience for almost everybody who worked on the building to put up a building like that, so all the more reason to be thrilled that it was on time and on budget and through the, through the pandemic to boot. The very happy news is that the building is also performing well and performing to target. And I, I'm ecstatic. As I said to John Peterson, I've been worrying for two years how we were actually going to shake out in terms of energy. Because what happens with a building like this is that you model it, and the quality of the energy model depends on a wide variety of factors. And then you construct it, and then you hope like heck that it's going to perform as it was modeled. And in this case, we're very lucky. It's actually performing slightly better than modeled. So we're, I just, I'm just so delighted to be able to talk with you about that. So I think this slide is projecting. You can see that on the screen, and I'll just keep going. So we, one of the things that's happened is that Energy, EverSource has recognized this building with a Design of the Year, New Construction Design of the Year in 2023 for Energy Excellence. And they're thrilled. And this is a regionally and indeed nationally significant building. It's an early building in a wave of geothermal construction that's coming, which is going to be accelerated by the fact that the Inflation Reduction Act prioritizes geothermal and provides a 30% tax credit for it. And so this building has been very helpful for a number of school districts who want to build a building like this now and have called, visited, and inquired about how to, how to do this. So we will be, when kids come for tours of the buildings from the high school or the green team at Gates, I ask them if they've ever been in a geothermal building before. And they mostly have not. Most of us have not. But in time, many, this will be a much more common building type. So I want to show you. Let's see if I can make this move. How can I? There we go. So the yardstick that we use when we talk about energy performance is EUI, Energy Use Intensity. It is KBtu, which is a universal energy unit per square foot per year. It is like a yardstick for buildings or a sticker. It's like the sticker on your washing machine from Energy Star that tells you how, how the building is expected to perform per square foot. And so all the energy used in the building divided by square foot per year. So that's a score. And that 40.1 on the left column is the, is what a building would be. The score expected for a building built to code, 40.1 EUI, Energy Use Intensity. This building was modeled at, Boardwalk was modeled at 23.1 EUI. And the tremendous drop, big gains in efficiency through heating, cooling, interior lighting, and a number of other aspects that are listed there in the details. Among the very important efficiency measures that were included in the design and construction of this building was an extremely tight building envelope. And the team was really challenged. The spec called for a passive house standard of air infiltration, meaning almost no leaks in the building. And they, they were told that they probably couldn't achieve this, but they were able to do it. And we know that they achieved it because the building was tested. So it was a blower door tested, which is unusual for a building this size. But they seal, they closed up all the openings on the building and brought in two blower door kits, which is that bright red photo on the right. And then you turn on the fans and you drive air into the building, and you test how much air you're able to infiltrate into the building. And the building did achieve the 0.06 score for passive house standards. So it was a tremendous achievement, really something for the project team to be very proud of. And it, and it means that the building can coast with no new energy inputs for a long time and hold its temperature. Of course, the geothermal system is tremendously efficient as well. It's a heat pump system. Geo also, geo is, geothermal could also, is also called ground source heat pump, similar to air source heat pump, which people are hearing about for residential. We have 65 wells that are 600 feet deep. The geothermal field is in that blue area that you see between the building and the brook. And this is my homegrown slide. EverSource tells me that they're going to make me a better diagram, so forgive me. I'm just trying to help people understand how the high-efficiency system in this building works. And so at the far left, can you all see my cursor if I move it around? At the far left of the, of the photo of the mechanical room is the supply lines bringing in prewarmed water from underground from the geothermal well field. So that water we're sending out close to freezing, it comes back at 55 degrees. And we're getting that pre-warming for free, sort of. I mean, we got to run the pumps, but the earth is warming it for us. And then that water goes through this great big bank of five heat exchangers. Heat, also called heat pumps, also called chillers. And it is lifted then with electricity to what's called low-tem hot water, to 120, 125, 130. And we can do that very efficiently with heat pumps. And then we circulate that low-tem hot water out to the building. So a gas-fired boiler would be running at 90% efficiency. The system is running at 200, 300, maybe 600% efficiency. It's really extraordinary. Engineers use the word magic, so it's, it's really a remarkable system. That low-tem hot water goes out to these radiant panels up in the ceiling. You see them. They're actually studded all the way through the building, and they're sort of new-fangled, new-fangled radiators. The low-tem hot water also goes to the roof and runs through these rooftop units where we bring in fresh water, I mean, excuse me, fresh air, filter it, warm it, and then drive it down into the building. There's big energy recovery wheels spinning inside those rooftop units so that the, the old air that's being removed, we extract heat from it and use that to pre-warm the new, fresh air that's coming in. And this is, and in, and in the summer, the whole thing reverses, and we provide cooling for the building. So it's like your air conditioning unit, air conditioning units and refrigerators are heat pumps. It's the same technology, except it can run backwards in the winter. And this COP6 down here at the bottom of this slide is that coefficient of performance. So that's the efficiency levels of 3, 4, 500, 600% that I'm talking about. Really an astonishing achievement.
I know, but still.
There you go.
That's maybe the size of the building, right? I mean, that's another.
I'm sorry?
Also giving the size of the building overall is another component, right?
I guess so. I guess so. I mean, you could, you could get these same efficiencies even in a smaller building. One of the things that's great, though, is that we can move, if, on the sunny side of the building, we can take the warmth from that sunny side and move it over to the shaded side. So there are efficiencies being harvested even within the building.
You're not generating electricity.
We're not generating electricity, no.
But that's coming next.
That's coming next. That's coming next. So this, we have a terrific commissioning agent on contract to the district this year. EverSource is paying for half of that contract. He is providing invaluable services in continuing to troubleshoot the building. It is complex. It does need to be tuned. He's, he's finding all kinds of good stuff to take care of. So this blue dash line up here, where am I, where's my cursor? Is, is an EUI of 40, which is the code building. The red dash line is 25. And if the building performs at 25 or better, we will, we will receive the second incentive from EverSource of $175,000. We'll know that in August or September when the 12-month tracking period ends. And if, and the 20, the green dash line is 23.1, which is the, the EUI target, the modeling, what the building was modeled at. And you will, the blue line is a, is how the building is actually performing, the blue solid line. And it is a trailing number here, so it's looking backwards. So you can see that through the spring and then again on into the fall, and now the building is performing better than targeted. And that becomes more clear as it moves deeper into the year and the trailing numbers get better and better. So I'm very excited. We're below the target at this time. I don't want to count chickens too early, but it's looking promising for receiving the posed incentive. This is another way of looking at it. The, the blue bars are the monthly kilowatt hours. The red solid line is KW demand, how spiky the building is. You will see that in January it jumped up. That's because two motors went out in the energy wheels and the rooftop units and some other issues, which Brad helped us identify and we're, and are fixed, many of them in February. Also, February was warmer. This weather is not, this data is not weather-adjusted yet. Brad will be doing that for us. This is the same data. So this, this is the fall when we first opened, very high energy use because Consigly was still running the building wide open and doing balance, air balancing. Then we moved into the first spring. Things got a lot better. This is the summer. We should have seen a dip here. We didn't because we were running the building fully occupied because we were still troubleshooting. Even though it wasn't occupied, we needed to run it like that. The fall, here we are with full of kids again for our second year, looking real good. Here's the pop-up in January and then better in February. And this is the last chart I'll show you. The dash line is the energy model. Here's the building exceeding the energy model in the summer because we were running it occupied. Oops. And here's, here's the energy model, what we should be doing in the fall, and the building performing better than that model. Here's the jump up in January and the drop back down in February. And I also wanted to say that, like, to have put up, it's an extremely prudent decision that the district has made to put up a very high-efficiency building with a terrific envelope on a super-efficient system that is sipping electricity because electricity is the most stable, least inflation-prone fuel that we can use. We're not talking, my grandmother's baseboard electric here. This is, this is a spaceship of a building using electricity at a remarkably low rate. And electricity is, is the most heavily regulated fuel that we have. So it is far less inflation-prone than gas or oil for heating a building. It's, it's, it gives us budget predictability over time and, and also no emissions from the building. So it's, there's no combustion happening in this building, and it's, it's a really remarkable achievement. So hats off to the building committee for making this choice. And I'm thrilled to say that it is performing as modeled.
Thanks, Kate. I, I think we've got a lot of questions because people were starting to ask them now, so we'll, we'll start down here. Vikram and then Ben.
I'm just, absolutely remarkable. I'm just astounded. It's just, this is absolutely wonderful. We want to put geothermal in our house, so doubly interested for that. But the pressure testing in building that size, I think, isn't that kind of remarkable to be able to do that?
I'm sorry?
To pressure test a building that, that size, isn't it? I mean, it's supposed to be like a small box. It's a huge.
Yes, it's not, it's not commonly done to pressure, to.
Something of that size, right?
Yes, correct.
So really, my question is, so it's doing well now, but I mean, are there things like gaskets and so on that are going to degrade over time that will sort of reduce the efficiency? Or that's kind of built into it?
In order to have a building, have a good pressure test, you need to, it's not, it's not complicated. You just need to set that goal and train your crews and do it right from the start. So that, because when the building is wide open and not, and the finishes are not on yet, that's when you can get at things and make sure that they're taped and that, and that seams are tight.
I see, okay.
You can, you can test that with a, with a smoke pencil. So often, they'll do a blower door test and watch where the smoke is escaping and go back and fix those issues.
Right.
And then blower door test it again. So it's not complicated. It's not expensive. It just has to be done thoughtfully and done right.
So I mean, that, that's more like the, the main wall of the building. What about like doors and windows where there's seals around them?
Sure, doors and.
Are those designed in such a way that they close that the seals, does it have to be replaced any, on a regular basis or anything?
Yeah, it's more, it's about, it's about where building materials are meeting each other, and it's about where the walls meet the roof.
Okay.
And just making sure that, that we've, we built, we have built casual in this country for a long time. Because we weren't thinking about energy.
Right, right. But when you focus on it, this is just, just remarkably incredible. The other thing is, we touched upon electricity. Is there any plans in the future going forward to mitigate the electrical costs with solar?
To mitigate?
Some of the electrical costs with solar?
Yes, there are plans to do that.
Could you speak on that perhaps?
I'm sorry?
Could you speak about that perhaps?
Yes, I'm sure there are going to be other questions, so let me just see what comes in, what happens with those. in, what happens with those.
All right, let's go, let's go to Ben. There's, there's definitely gonna be a question or two around solar and net zero.
So my question is, can you use the geothermal loop to generate electricity to reduce the load? That you're trying to achieve? Because I saw the reduction in terms of electricity costs and with potential rolling blackouts coming from ISO New England in the years to come, I'm just curious, could this system actually generate electricity?
There's tremendous excitement about using geothermal to generate electricity, but those guys are going two thousand feet down?
Right.
Or five, I think it's five thousand feet down, not, not, um, six hundred feet down.
Yeah, this is only six hundred.
It's only six hundred feet, so we're not tapping into, um, a deep enough layer to get boiling hot, high-pressure steam coming out.
Let's talk offline.
Okay, maybe you know something that we should check out.
Yeah. All right, uh, I'm, as, as I'm about to go around, I just wanna make, um, one comment, which is, we talked about the envelope of the building, and I wanna point out that the contractor that was responsible for a lot of the drywall and the envelope of the building was a company called Sweeney Drywall, which happens to be a Boxborough company. One of the larger portions of the contract on this building was awarded to a Boxborough local company. So I just wanted to point that out, 'cause we're giving them good credit and, and not only are we giving them good credit, but they're a local company. Continuing around.
I actually have one.
Okay, Becca.
Um, I don't know much about how these things work, so maybe this is a dumb question, but, um, is it possible that with a colder winter than we had this year, that the efficiency would go down? Because it looked really good this year, but we didn't get, like, hardly anything.
Right, yes, the efficiency, I mean, with an air source heat pump, efficiency drops as, because it's harvesting outside air, right? So as those outside air temps drop to twenty, ten, zero, what's, what's different, what's new about heat pumps now is that they keep operating and they don't freeze up. And so they're appropriate for Maine and the rest of New England as well now. Um, and so that's important for people to know, 'cause your grandmother's heat pump used to freeze up, but, but that no longer happens and they retain efficiency down pretty far and they also keep operating. With a geosystem, it's different, 'cause where we're harvesting, um, temperatures from is the earth, which is, which is giving us great, um, regularity for both cooling and heating, right? So fifty-five degrees is just about where we want a building with a little bit of a tweak. It's, it's a, it's a much better source to tap. In the winter, we are pulling in outside air and warming it, and so if that outside air is very cold, then, then yes, it takes more energy. But none of this is expected to pose a challenge for the system.
I had a question from a constituent regarding the tightness of the building through that passive test and measured CO2 levels with regard to that. I know that you're moving on of air around the building, but is there a measure of CO2 that's a part of this as well?
I'm so glad, I really appreciate.
We have a very smart constituent who asked that question.
Yeah, and, and a super important question, I really appreciate you asking it. Um, the building has a spectacular ventilation system, and what you want in an energy-efficient building where you're trying to make it tight, whether it's your house or a, a commercial scale building like this, is you want, um, mechanical ventilation where you are sending out the old air like this and you're using that to prewarm the incoming air, so that you're harvesting the heat. But you certainly wanna be ventilating and you wanna be ventilating fully and thoroughly and to standards, whether it's your house or whether it's a building like this. And I'm happy to say that part of the design of the building in every classroom is a thermostat, as you would expect, but if you touch that thermostat and get to the third screen, you will see that each of those thermostats has a CO2 sensor embedded in it. And when you get to the third screen, it tells you the CO2 level in your classroom. So every teacher can, and students, if they wanna do it as well, can find out what the CO2 level is, is in their classroom. And the CO2 levels have been terrific.
And one, one other question not related to that. Um, recognizing that there's a bit of a more passive system for cooling the building, that, I know that the top floor ends up getting very warm in, when it's hotter outside. The, the students, the teachers have complained about heat in the, the building when it's very warm outside. Is there anything, you've heard about this or something we could take offline?
It's not a, it's not a passive system, it's the same system. Um, we had a hot, a real, um, challenging, uh, hot spell in September as we were opening schools, and I actually gathered data from the building management system and sent it to the design engineers, GGD, uh, GGD, and they said at, 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 um, we, our cla, some of the classrooms, a few of the classrooms were at seventy-six. We had other classrooms in un-air, un-air-conditioned schools that were warmer than that, right? But it was a new building, so we were thinking maybe we would see seventy-two. Um, but when I packaged up all the information and sent it to them, uh, they said, given the high humidity and the high temperatures, seventy-six is, and here's the design arc for the building, seventy-six is what we would be expecting. So there was, there's a really interesting decision to put in, not put in the last few geothermal wells and put in a backup boiler instead, 'cause that was a, um, less expensive, less capital cost to do it that way. And I, um, yeah, I think, well, one of the, when, when people ask about lessons learned when they come for tours, I, I say, you know, we may regret having not put in the last six wells, because that would be backup, not only for the coldest days, but also for the warmest days. So the building will, we'll, we'll never have desperate temperatures in that building, but when, when it's ninety-six and high humidity, we're not gonna be delivering seventy degrees to classrooms. And, right, where are we going? We don't know, but I know you, I know that's what your eyebrows are saying. But, 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 you know, we're, the building is fully air-conditioned, that's a big, that's also a big achievement. Lots of schools in Massachusetts are not, so we're, we're very lucky to be able to, um, have a building where we know kids are gonna be able to learn.
There were issues over the course of the last year with especially younger kids having trouble because the rooms were so warm and because the rooms were so warm during the school day. And it was a question to ask about this.
Yes, I think we may be, I mean, we were still troubleshooting. I think we may be able to provide a more reliable product going forward in terms of conditioning.
Lakshmi.
A dumb question, I have no knowledge or any, haven't done any reading up also on this. Um, the ground, the water temperature that we rely on, the groundwater for the geothermal system, you said fifty-five.
Hmm.
Does that say stay pretty much at that temperature throughout the year? And the second question is, um, how does climate change affect that?
Hmm, so it's, I'm glad you're asking. The, when, if you go down two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred feet, it's fifty-five degrees all the time. So we're sending water underground, we send it underground at, um, freezing, almost freezing in the winter and it comes back prewarmed. And in the summer, we send it down hot and it comes back precooled for us. So it, it returns to us at fifty-five degrees all year long and that's good. We want to work from that. That's a, that's a, that's a useful temperature for us to, you start with a source material in terms of water to, to condition the building. And, and climate change will not affect that. That's a very good question, so.
Okay, thank you.
Because the earth will be sta, will be stable, will be static.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, I wanna, I wanna go back to sort of the, the net zero and the, the energy part of this building. So there's still a big component that's missing, which is a solar panel array and a battery energy storage system. And I think it speaks a little bit to Gary's question, too, at the beginning of the meeting, which is, um, we're, we're, we're still not complete on sort of the entire design and, and, uh, electrical design of this facility. What will it look like? What's the theory behind net zero? What will it look like in terms of our consumption once the entire system is up and functioning fully?
Um, uh, let's see, in terms of our consumption. So we'll be, we'll be, um, generating way too much electricity in the summer and we'll be feeding that back to the grid and, um, stacking up credits on the bill. And in the winter, we will be buying electricity from the grid and we'll be using those credits to, to, to buy it. So our consumption will be the same, but, but we'll be, we'll be provide, we'll be generating quite a lot of it on-site.
Recognizing that maybe the rate that we get paid for the electricity we generate is different than the cost of what we buy from, and the goal is to have a net zero consumption of electricity, will we still have an electric bill for the building?
We certainly will, because we will, we will not own the solar plus storage system. We are, we are going to be doing that through a contract called a PPA or assess us, since there will be battery storage involved. And, um, because the district isn't owning the system, um, the, the company that owns the system will, the way that it gets, that gets paid for is that we, we buy electricity from the system. So we'll, there's a kilowatt hour price that we will pay for, for, for what we buy off that system.
Ben.
Real quick question, what is the size of the battery that you're installing?
It's, it's one megawatt, two megawatt hours. Yes, the one here on campus, uh, near the high school is, is double that. It's two Tesla mega packs, um, two megawatts slash four megawatt hours. This one will be a Tesla mega pack as well, but just one, so it'll be half that size.
And how long does it hold its charge for?
It takes two, well, it's a, it's a.
Discharge.
Yes, it's a two-hour battery. And that's a, that's a sweet spot for making things work financially. Both of them are two-hour batteries.
For full disclosure, I work for an ALM, so.
Very good, very good.
All right, any final questions or comments for Kate? Vikram.
Someone to Andrew's point about the seventy-six degrees on the third floor. Um, there are thermostats in each room, are they, is it possible for them to bring it down or is that?
Um, so I, we're still learning.
Right, right.
How to work with this building. The thermostats offer occupants a choice from sixty-eight to seventy-two, but it is not a fast-moving system. So I've learned to say, is, if you have ever been in a kitchen with radiant heat in the floor or a bathroom, it's, it's more like that. And we run that low temp hot water at a steady rate almost all the time. So there's not a big setback, it's very cheap and, and efficient to run, and it doesn't, there's not a lot of snap to, um, get it to jump. Um, and so it's, it's more like radiant heat that we run, we, we run it most of the time. I mean, you can set it back a little bit, but you don't wanna set it back a lot, and it doesn't, it doesn't, um, jump up in temperature quickly. So if somebody adjusts their thermostat, they're not gonna get a rapid response.
Yeah.
But, um, we, it, it is intended, those thermostats are intended to provide the users some degree of control.
Hmm.
Um, but if we've got ninety-six and high humidity, it's, the system is doing everything it can and not, not quite able to hit the mark.
That's all absolutely amazing, thank you very, very, very much.
Be back.
All right. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, on to our ongoing business. First item in our ongoing business is our budget vote. So we'll have a couple, um, different budget votes that we'll have to make this evening. So Peter's gonna give us a presentation. We have to first vote our budget assessment, um, and then we also have, uh, some of the fees that we have to vote, uh, individually as well. So Peter, I will hand it over to you for a quick reminder of where we are on our budget voting process.
All right, so, um, tonight is the final school committee budget vote. Um, you know, you are slated to vote the A version of the budget tonight, which is the hundred and fourteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. Um, that's a seven point six eight percent increase, um, over current year. You can see the two assessments respectively below, just a reminder, the difference between the Acton and Boxborough assessments is enrollment-based, um, so we are seeing more students coming from Boxborough than we are from Acton. Well, excuse me, an increase in the number of students is greater from Boxborough than in Acton. Um, so that's, that's really what's driving that. Um, this is the same slide you've been seeing, there are no updates to the budget since the prior meeting. Um, this is the final budget vote, it has to take place tonight, because you're required to do that forty-five days, uh, before the town meetings. Um, so once you vote this budget, our treasurer will then send the official notice off to both towns, uh, so the warrants for town meetings can be prepared. Um, just as a reminder, in terms of process, you're voting in A budget tonight. The A budget is the official school committee budget, once you vote it, that moves forward to the town meetings. In order to fund that budget, though, um, the town of Acton would need to pass an operational override. That override vote is scheduled for April thirtieth, that is a ballot vote, just like any other general election, where a majority have to vote in favor of it. Um, if the vote is yes on that night, then the A budget continues to move forward to both town meetings, where it would then need to pass. If the override, um, ballot question does not pass, then you would need to immediately reconvene and vote your B budget to be prepared to go forward, because that, the B budget is the amount of money that Acton would have available under the levy limit. So there's no opportunity to come back later and increase the B budget. That really is the alternative to the override. Just to be, be very clear about that, there's no rosier picture that we're able to get to, because the town of Acton is, is revenue constrained at that point. Um, you know, we have talked to the town of Boxborough, you know, they do have capacity, between levy capacity and reserves, um, to be able to get through this year without an override vote. It does still mean that the, the taxpayers are paying that higher level of tax. Um, from what we've heard from the town of Boxborough, though, we should anticipate they would need to go for an override next year, I believe, is what, what we're hearing. So, um, and that means that we will probably have a very similar process in budget development to what we're doing now, I just wanna prepare you for that, that this is actually a couple years of a process here, um, to get through this. But what we're seeking tonight is the A budget vote, is a, uh, two-thirds vote of the school committee, because you have weighted votes, that's a two-thirds weighted vote of the school committee, so, you know, I know Adam has a, a cheat sheet ready. Um, and we're gonna actually, I think Adam is gonna ask you to go around and vote, just to make sure we can tally this correctly and record it. Um, and I'll turn it over to you, Adam.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, so I am, I'm gonna, when we get to it, uh, I'm gonna call in order of the names that I have on this list and very quickly tally it up. Um, I will say that there have been times in the past where we've had to have a couple re, revotes to make sure that we had the right vote and the right, um, quantity. And it's a, it's a majority vote of the school committee, including those people, sorry, two-thirds vote of the school committee, including those people who may not be in attendance tonight, so those count as a, a zero in my tally marks. Um, so that being said, there is a memo in the packet with the very specific, long motion language that needs to be read. Does anybody have, if there are no questions, then we'll read that. Vikram, you have a question?
Just one question, you said if somebody was, isn't here, it counts as a zero. Does that mean a yes vote counts as one and a no counts as minus one? Is that essentially, I mean, aside from the weighting, just generally?
No, so, uh, it's, it's even more complicated than that. A yes vote from a member from the town of Acton counts as two and a half votes, and a yes vote from a member from the town of Boxborough counts as one. What I haven't done, and I'll do that quickly as someone reads the very long, um, motion, is get what the total number is and then get what the magic number is to hit two-thirds. All right.
Do you have to read the note, too?
No.
I move that the committee adopts the budget of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented in the amount of one hundred fourteen million, three hundred eighty thousand, one hundred five dollars, which is reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the following amounts. Anticipated chapter seventy aid in the amount of sixteen million, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars. Anticipated state transportation aid in the amount of two million, four hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. Anticipated state charter school aid in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Anticipated Medicaid reimbursement of two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Anticipated investment earnings of three hundred thousand dollars. Estimated miscellaneous revenues of twenty-five thousand dollars. Estimated McKinney-Vento transportation of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And transfers from the following district reserves. Excess and deficiency fund in the amount of zero dollars. Capital stabilization fund in the amount of zero dollars. For a net amount to be assessed to member towns in accordance with the education reform law and the terms of the regional agreement and amendments heretofore as follows. Acton, seventy-nine million, seventy thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars, consisting of a capital assessment of five million, eight hundred ten thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars, and an operating assessment of seventy-three million, two hundred sixty thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars. And Boxborough, fifteen million, nine hundred sixty thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars, consisting of a capital assessment of one million, eighty thousand, five hundred sixty dollars, and an operating assessment of fourteen million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars.
Second.
Okay, so that was Becca with the motion, and Lila with the very easy second. Thank you for that. We're going to go down now in alphabetical order by last name. Ben. Thank you. Tori's not here. Liz?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Vikram?
Yes.
Lila?
Yes.
Yanshun?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Myself is a yes as well, so that gets us enough votes to pass. I'm not going to do the math for you. We needed fourteen-point-three, we got that, so that motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next up, we have some motions that we need to do on our tuitions and fees. Give me just a second to pull the memo up, because I think that's a bunch of individual motions. Yes. Okay, so, these we can do with just a voice vote, and I will ask that somebody make each one of the motions in the memo, if they have the memo available. If not, I will take a motion to set the preschool tuition for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at three thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for half-day programming, and seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars for full-day programming.
So moved.
So, I need a motion, because I asked for the-
So moved.
Thank you. And so, we got Vikram, and then Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. Secondly, I'll take a motion to set the full-day kindergarten tuition for twenty-four, twenty-five at one thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
So moved. Second.
So, that was Ben, and then Vikram. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous?
I oppose.
Sorry?
I oppose.
Opposed, so there's one opposition, and that is Lakshmi. Next, I'll take a motion to establish an activity fee at the junior and senior high schools of fifty dollars per year per student, so that the one-time payment of this fee each year provides access to all clubs and student activities within the school for the school year. There may be some academic teams that charge additional fees as outlined in the student handbook.
So moved. Seconded.
So, that's Vikram with the motion, and Ben with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Finally, I will accept a motion to set the high school student parking fee at two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
So moved. Second.
Ben with the motion, and Ginny with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. And then finally, I'll accept a motion to set the junior high school and high school student athletic participation fee at three hundred and fifty dollars per sport, with an additional two hundred and fifty dollars fee charged for ice hockey and Alpine skiing, with a family cap of one thousand two hundred dollars per family.
So moved. Seconded.
Vikram with the motion, Ben with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, me.
Andrew is opposed. Any abstentions? None. Thank you. Okay, where are we on our agenda? Next, Peter, who wisely chose to stay at that end of the room, is going to sit in tonight to present for Deb, who is ill, on our Student Opportunity Act plan. Peter?
All right, so, hello again, everyone, and I'm, I'm going to apologize in advance for this lower-skill presentation. Deb would be much more skilled in presenting this, and I certainly need to credit her and her whole team for all of the work that they've done to get this plan to this point. Just as a quick review, the Student Opportunity Act was designed to provide additional funding to schools. We do not see any of that, because we are a district that is in hold harmless status. However, we still are obligated to file Student Opportunity Act plans. You will see that, you know, there are some budget amounts outlined in the plan that's in your packet. Those, there's no additional new resources. It's just a percentage of already existing staff resources that we had to calculate to be able to put in that. I would not give a lot of time to the budget numbers, quite honestly, because it has no impact on what we're doing with this. So, again, the goal of the Student Opportunity Act was to address some of the real systemic inequalities in the Massachusetts education system, and to push districts to develop three-year plans to be able to do that. It requires us to address a subset of our initiatives, and you can see it's really, you know, the experiences and outcomes that students have, and, you know, rapidly improving outcomes of students in that lowest academic performance of the district. So, that's really what we are targeting to do. When we came to you last time, we had started this process, and we had done, you know, our initial data analysis, and we had identified our priority area with our leadership team based on that data dive. We were in the process of engaging families and caregivers, as well as some of our other stakeholders. I'll speak a little to that. We then had to take that feedback and finalize our focus area, select our evidence-based program, and start to develop strategies that we want to implement to address some of the disparities. And then we have to set some three-year targets for how we're going to improve. So, in terms of engaging families and stakeholders, we sent out a survey broadly to all of our families, as well as all of our staff across the district, in order to solicit feedback around that. We additionally sought out more directed and targeted feedback from our CPAC, our LPAC, our school councils. I already mentioned educators across the district. And we didn't mention this last time, but when we thought about it a little more, especially where chronic absenteeism was a focus, we really wanted to engage our nurses. And so, we did some additional outreach to our nurses to make sure they were involved in informing this plan. When we surveyed our stakeholders around their preferences for, you know, what they believed would lead to the greatest improvement in chronic absenteeism, almost sixty percent responded by saying it was really about developing partnerships with students and families. That doesn't mean we're not going to also, you know, have physically and mentally welcoming and safe spaces in the district. We still obviously do that every day in our schools, and are focused on how we improve that. But the real focus of this plan in particular is on the relationship that we have with our students and families in trying to address chronic absenteeism. So, that gets us through, you know, the priority area, as well as the strategic objective and that focus area. So, we chose one-point-three developing partnerships with students and their families. Just a little bit of background, I think Deb did a great job really digging into some of the survey results, but just some anecdotes that came out of that survey that we think highlighted why we want to do this. You know, some comments, more consistent translation across school departments. Students need to feel safe and listened to if there's a hurdle attending school. Learning about the tone and impact of our letters, calls, and communications that we send to families is really important. In, in order to identify possible solutions, we have to really listen to and learn with families of children who are chronically absent. We can't do this in a bubble. We have to discover why they might be chronically absent, and figure out what those barriers might be, so we can implement some strategies to help. So, we took all of that information and feedback back to our leadership team, and we have to select then, based on the feedback, an evidence-based program from a pre-populated list of DESI-approved programs. This, just as a reminder, and I think Deb said this last time, a program is not like a new curriculum to come in, it's a focus area. And it's where evidence has shown that if you focus on something, you're going to see the improvement. And so, the evidence-based program we selected was one-point-three-A, which was diverse approaches to meaningful family engagement. Train all staff on multiple strategies and tools to engage with families in meaningful two-way communication. Two-way obviously means it's not just the school telling families something, it's actually engaging in a dialogue in order to inform what we're doing and how we modify our practice. We then looked at what we want, think we need to focus on as a district as part of that evidence-based program, and so, we've really picked three areas. And I want to stress, this is a three-year plan that we're committing to beginning next year. So, we've started to do a little bit of work on this, but this is really where next year kicks in, and then lasts two additional years after that. But three things we want to do. One is increase consistent communication and engagement between schools and families. We want to create a multi-tier system for reporting, recording, and responding to student chronic absenteeism. We have done a lot of work around MTSS, and really thinking in that tiered system of supports across the district, and it's very logical to think of this as just another part of that MTSS process. So, we want to really articulate what that is, and make sure people know how we navigate that. And then we want to, you know, provide all of our staff some more learning opportunities about how, you know, about and addressing chronic absenteeism, from anything from mindset and bias work, to tools to engage with students and families in care, you know, meaningful ways. I'll, I'll give you an example of what that professional learning can look like. We actually just had a group of our educators the other day from Miriam actually go over to the new shelter in Acton, and they got a tour of the shelter, they met with the shelter director, they got to learn about, you know, some of the experiences of what families do in the shelter. They saw a room to kind of better understand the conditions that families might be living in. It happened to be a student's birthday, so they, they bought a little birthday present over for the student whose birthday it was. That was very exciting, but just really making sure that our educators understand and have empathy for the experiences that our families are having, as a way of, you know, increasing how we engage, and just better understanding where families are coming from, so that we can meet them where they're at, rather than expecting families to come to where we're at. And then finally, you have to set some targets. Districts can choose to set their own targets. However, DESI already puts out targets as part of its accountability program every year, and typically, the DESI targets require improvement of between one and two percent a year over your targets. And they do it with their team of psychometricians and data analysts in order to develop targets and make them statistically significant. Since our data team continues to be at zero at the district, we have chosen to go with their targets. We think they're probably more reliable than anything we could think of. The specific student groups that we're looking at in this plan are our economically disadvantaged students, multilingual learners, students with disabilities, black African-American students, and Hispanic-Latino students. If you remember the original data that we showed you, those are the really areas on the heat map that we're seeing higher levels of chronic absenteeism, and we think it's really important to help kids get back into school, and make sure that we're thinking of how we modify our systems and supports in school to encourage students to be able to feel more comfortable coming back. So, happy to try and answer some questions that you might be thinking of for Deb, but I, I will answer any questions, but what we are seeking is your vote to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented in the packet, so that Deb can then go into DESI's portal and actually input the information. You're going to see in the plan, it looks more like a rough draft, because there's things highlighted that say, you know, dropdown box, checkbox, things like that. That's because DESI actually makes you complete a survey and individually copy and paste all your responses in. It's not very user-friendly, but it's what, what they have. So, with that, turn it over to you for questions.
Thanks, Peter. Vikram and Becca.
As you're saying, that DESI formally expects one to two percent improvement per year, but unofficially, do they see higher numbers than that? And I would also imagine, is it the case that over the course of several years, that it sort of ramps up exponentially, as sort of, you know, as they dig and understand why the chronic absenteeism is there, and what they do to address it?
Typically, as you get closer to your goal, DESI actually shrinks the target growth that you need to attain the goal. And I think of, you know, like our high school is, for example, typically has ninety-nine percent of students passing MCAS on the first try. To think that they would ever get to a hundred percent is really challenging. So, the, the goal is really incremental at that point, but the further away you are from kind of that norm, the, the goal will be a little bit bigger, because they think you can close it faster.
I really appreciate the addition of the nurses to the pool of people you're, you're pulling information from, because I think, I know I mentioned illness, and I think a couple of us also mentioned that as a concern. And I also just appreciate that this is sort of leading with empathy and non-judgment to say, you know, we want to hear from families exactly what needs they have and how we can best address it, because I agree that the issue might be something that is difficult to talk about, so it's good to leave that door open and focus on making sure that we're meeting people where they're at.
I think this is also consistent with how we've tried to think of social-emotional learning. If you think of the goal language that we had, it's about shifting our environments and our practices in order to see the gains in students. It's not about, you know, we're, it, you know, there, there can sometimes be, on face value, maybe people rush to a judgment that we're trying to fix kids or fix families. That's actually not the case. It's actually that we have to look at how we're doing our jobs, and shifting our environments and our practices to better meet the needs of families and students.
I appreciate that that's the approach that we're taking, and I do just want to draw folks' attentions, draw folks' attention, singular, to what the CPAC sent over for their recommendations, because I think a lot of those, even just personally, like experienced a bunch of medical visits that I would have been chronically absent. And I also understand that you can't really learn when you're not in the building, but there are a lot of valid reasons that students aren't able to come. And the other thing that I'm connecting this to is this piece around restorative justice, and wondering how that could play into this work, thinking about creating environments where kids feel safe to come to, and then when there is stuff that happens, how we reintegrate students back in to a, an environment that feels safe. So, I know that's kind of been an ongoing conversation, and I just wonder if that can be connected to this initiative.
Yeah, I mean, you know, ultimately, just about everything in education is connected, because we know that, you know, you don't, don't do social-emotional learning in isolation. You do it because social-emotional learning and academic achievement are inextricably linked. The same thing goes for, you know, why we address bias issues in education, because the traumatic impact of bias has a negative impact on learning. So, certainly, that's a piece of it. We've actually started talking about goals for next year with our leadership team, and we'll come back to you toward the end of the year for more feedback on this. But, you know, one of the emerging themes that, you know, we seem to be honing in more on is thinking about behavior and our adult responses to behavior as a part of how we want to, you know, continue to grow around social-emotional learning. And that includes, you know, consistency of our responses across schools and classrooms, and, and making sure we're really digging into the root causes of behaviors, rather than just addressing maybe what we see as conduct in a, in a more traditional sense. We have, a, a team of us are going next Thursday. Middlesex Partnerships for Youth is putting on a day-long workshop around restorative practices, so we actually have a number of people from the leadership team attending that to be able to get some information, bring it back, and start doing some planning. So, certainly thinking along that line. We don't want to link too much to the SOA, because, you know, why be accountable for something you actually don't get money for, when we can just do it because we want to? But definitely on our mind.
I'll, I'll just echo what Peter just said, in not as nice terms. This is an unfunded mandate. This is, this is an accountability component of a funding program that we're not eligible for. So, while I agree that the, addressing the root cause of chronic absenteeism is important, I'm sure there's lots of extra work that we have to do in addition to meeting those goals that the state are requiring us to do, and we're not getting any funding for it. Just, just wanted to add that in. Peter, Peter set me up nicely for that one. Any other questions? Yeah, Lakshmi.
I, I understand we don't, we don't have to do it, but we are doing it like Peter said, right?
No, we do have to do it. We have to do it.
No, what we put in SOA, we have to do it.
Right.
But what we are not saying, what we would like to do, we will still do it, right? I mean, that's the goal.
Yeah.
Though we are not putting it down on the paper, right?
Well, what we're putting down on the paper is what we're going to do, but we're not going to get paid like many other municipalities that get, that this is a requirement to get their additional Student Opportunity Act funding. We don't get any additional funding. So, it's important, we're going to do it, we know we need to do it.
Yep.
There's extra work that's being required of us on the accountability side of this, that we don't get any additional funding in to, to support that part.
Yeah, but my question is, we're not going to skirt accountability because it's not in SOA, but we are going to make sure that is there outside of, outside of this document.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this would have been a district goal regardless of Student Opportunity Act, and when we know we have to be accountable for something with Student Opportunity Act, what we try to do is select something that was going to be a district goal anyway, because we know it's important. For example, the last plan was all around early literacy, and shifting our programs around early literacy. You saw the gains that we're seeing, where now we are all in that high-growth, high-achievement quadrant across all of our schools after three years of really targeted, focused work. That work was happening whether or not we did SOA, but we chose to submit SOA because it fits the SOA model, and it's something we're doing. So, we're going to continue to work on implementing the literacy program we have. We are continuing to work on, you know, really digging into our MTSS processes to provide all the supports we want for students, and we would have been also looking at chronic absenteeism. This is just a subset that goes to SOA.
Yeah, thank you. That, that was what I was trying to kind of put it up, put it down, saying we are still doing it, even though we didn't put it in SOA.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Vikram?
I was just going to comment about, you know, really, it's empathy and compassion that are sort of core to this and many other things that we're implementing. I think we're already at very many steps ahead with, you know, all our factual, you're already on the right page about that.
Okay, thank you.
Next on our agenda, Peter, are you going to do this one from that end of the room or this end? Okay, so Peter's going to come back, so I'll do a little bit of a setup. The next is really an open discussion for the committee, excuse me, around the statement of interest for the Mass School Building Authority for a statement of interest of the Conan Elementary School. So we do have to submit that statement of interest. There was a memo in our packet that Peter's going to give us a quick overview of. There's no vote tonight, but we do have a deadline coming up, and so we need to, as a committee, talk about that a bit this evening. Didn't vamp long enough for you, did I?
No. So there's a memo in your packet that outlines kind of a little bit of background about MSBA with links if you wanted to dig in and you were less familiar with the MSBA process. But I'll just summarize, you know, some, some really high-level points. The MSBA process is a years-long process, from the time you're accepted into the pipeline to the time you actually move into a building. So, you know, like the Boardwalk Campus Project started the year before I started it and acted in Boxborough with, with a community vision process. And that was once we were accepted into the pipeline, but we actually had to apply multiple years to be even get to that point where we were accepted. So, you know, you're really thinking this is like a seven-to-ten-year total process to get accepted. We, having anticipated the duration of time that it takes, right at the time we started submitting for, you know, the Boardwalk Campus, we, for, it was actually a Douglas project was the genesis of Boardwalk, and we chose to make it a twin school as a, as a district. At the same time we started submitting for that, we also started submitting for Conan because we knew that we had challenges at Douglas, Gates, and Conan, where they needed study to determine whether we needed a renovation or replacement of those facilities. We know that when, when you're accepted for a building project in the MSBA pipeline, short of maybe like the Boston Public Schools where they have hundreds of schools, you only get one project at a time, and you're not going to get a second project until one of them is completed, and then you can move into that pipeline. So we've been submitting for Conan all along. We just typically update the generalized statement of interest, change some data along the way, and resubmit every year. It's not an incredibly heavy lift for us to do that, and it keeps us in that pipeline. This past fall, we hit a new milestone in that pipeline where Conan made the shortlist at MSBA, and MSBA staff came out and evaluated the Conan School for a potential project. That is a very shortlist of schools. And, you know, that's generally a signal that you are close to moving into the pipeline. We didn't move forward this past year, which I think would have been challenging given, you know, the operational override at the same time. But, you know, I think it's reasonable to anticipate that if we apply again, we're pretty close to moving in, and it would either be within one, two, maybe three years at the most, would be my gut instinct. So what we wanted to do was have a discussion with you tonight and get feedback from you if you want us to submit a statement of interest this year, knowing that if you submit, you're closer to being invited into that pipeline and to be prepared for that. When we last funded a feasibility study, they're, they're not inexpensive to do. A feasibility study now is probably somewhere between one and two million dollars just for the feasibility study to determine what the project will look like. When we last funded it, the district had built up reserves for a period of time and was able to tap into those reserves to pay a significant cost of it. I think it was, this is before I was here, but I think it was about seven hundred thousand dollars was the district cost, and the remainder was funded by the MSBA reimbursement part of the project. So, you know, in order to fund a feasibility study, it's probably, you know, on the magnitude of seven to eight hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. I did talk to Skanska, who's still is our project manager, you know, this past week. There were some things done as part of the Douglas Gates Project because we actually explored Conan at the same time. So we've already done a lot of the geotech testing. Geotech does not change unless you're, you know, you know, counting in millennia. You know, you're not going to get new, you know, glacial fill in your geotech report. We also deeply explored the Conan building in that. So, you know, if we go in a feasibility study, there might be a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars of savings in a feasibility study because of all the prior work that Arrow Street did, but it's still an expensive proposal that we would need to be able to fund. And you would need to know that once you start moving forward, you're now going to town meetings. Now, what I would say is, we made a decision on the Boardwalk Campus Project where we put together a financial model for that project and brought in members from both finance committees. Thank you, Gary. But we're looking at bond rates at the time and borrowing costs and everything else. And we made a decision to borrow the cost of that project all upfront, or nearly all upfront. We borrowed, I think, seventy-five, seventy million of seventy-five million that we needed to fund upfront. So that, that means that the tax bill hits early in the process, whereas in a more traditional building process, you actually do some short-term borrowing. It gradually increases as the project goes, and then you finally bond it at the end. So, you know, in that type of a process, you wouldn't be taking out your final bond until eight years from now. But, you know, you'd have to be talking to the community, obviously, about it much sooner. So wanted to just kind of put some of that color to it and get your general interest in it tonight. But if you do want to move forward, then at your next meeting, we'll back, bring back a statement of interest for you to vote, and then we would submit. I think April first is the MSBA deadline. Uh, no, sorry, fifteenth?
Twelve.
Twelve. But it's, it would, sorry, thank you. But it's after your next meeting, so next meeting is the timeline.
Thanks, Peter. I just want to put this out here. We forgot to vote on the SOA, so we'll have to come back to that.
Oh, yeah.
But let's, let's finish this up. I want to provide a little bit more context. So the MSBA is a quasi-government agency or a full-on government agency?
Government.
Government agency. And there's a tax that everyone pays in the Commonwealth that funds their ability to then help fund our projects. So the reason we go to the MSBA to engage in these projects as opposed to doing it by ourselves is because we get a reimbursement. For the Boardwalk Campus, as you saw in the memo, we got fifty percent of our, roughly fifty percent of our eligible costs. That's not all of the costs. So we, I think our, our effective reimbursement rate was in the low thirty percent of the overall cost. Still a big amount of money, roughly thirty-five million dollars that we get from the state. One of the things that the MSBA considers pretty strongly as you move forward in the process is the community support for a project like this. And so that's why we want to talk about this now. As Peter mentioned, because we were probably shortlisted for this year, there's a good chance that if we put in this statement of interest for next year, we could get shortlisted, which begins then the public outreach and making sure that, well, since we don't have a million dollars in reserves that we could put towards this, we would have to go to the towns for a vote to, to be able to fund the feasibility study. Should that fail at town meeting, that's a pretty clear indication to the MSBA that there isn't community support for something like this right now. And so that's the, that's sort of what we're trying to balance is, do we think we have community support versus what does it look like if we pull out of the pipeline and don't submit for next year? And, you know, I, in, in talking with Peter about whether or not we were going to submit, I was struggling with that, which is why we're bringing it to the committee. It's a, it's a pretty substantial decision. We got feedback at our budget Saturday from some of the other town boards around what we should do. And so we do have to give Peter some direction at the end of this evening about whether or not we want them to bring forward then a statement of interest, which is not a small amount of work to prepare, for next meeting to vote on that, or if we want to skip a year or two.
Yeah. And just to add some color, just the gentle balance here is obviously community resources and support versus I've never seen a building that got less expensive to build by waiting longer. So that, there is a definite balance to that.
So I guess it's really important to understand to the best of our ability what the impact is for, you know, taking like at least a year off. Because I think, you know, given the situation that we find ourselves in, it's not a good time to try to measure community support. I don't think it's a real measurement. I don't think it could be a real measurement. And I just think that there's too much on our plate and too, you know, already a really big ask in front of our community members. It just feels like way too much. But, you know, before coming to such a decision, I think that we want to know as well as we can of what the impact is for saying, you know, this, you know, we're going to, we're going to consider it next year. I believe at the time, if memory serves, I mean, we did, you know, acknowledge that Conan was in a similar state as the buildings that were getting replaced, particularly Gates. And, you know, I mean, obviously, we didn't make any promises, but we did make good faith representations that we weren't going to just forget about Conan if we got community support for the twin school. So anyway, that's a long way of saying, what if we say no right now?
Yeah, I think this is, this is where we're, we're sort of struggling is if we pull ourselves out of the pipeline for one year, how does that look to the MSBA? You know, all we're really trying to do is gauge what this agency is going to do in terms of whether or not, do we go to the end of the line if we miss a year of submitting? Or do we actually just pause for a year and get back in the line if we go back in next year? I think that, yeah, please.
And they will not give us that answer. Like, you're, you're not going to get that answer out of MSBA because, you know, the, A, they're not going to guarantee you that you're ever slated to get into the pipeline because they evaluate all submissions every year to determine what they have funding for. And then B, they're also not going to be able to tell you, well, if you pull out now, you go back to year one of seven, back to year one of five, because they're evaluating all the submissions every year. So I, like, we're just, unfortunately, this is a decision that we're going to have to make without certainty.
Sorry, if I could just follow up on that by saying, you know, obviously, there's an opportunity to elaborate on the reasons, and I can't imagine that we're the only district in this position this year that is, you know, mightily struggling with our budget. So, I mean, there's an opportunity for you to communicate the reason that we're not submitting a state of interest, right? It's not just, it doesn't show up, correct?
We can certainly email them separately and provide some, you know, information.
Context, okay.
But they just wouldn't see the statement of interest ultimately, yeah. So, and I, I don't think there's going to be prejudice by not submitting. I, I mean, I, I think they know where Conan is, they know the need, they've actually seen it firsthand and documented it now. And I see, I think they see this as an important project. So, you know, personally, I don't think they're going to say, well, if you pull out now, now you're seven years behind, but I'm also not going to sit here and guarantee it for us either. Yeah.
I have a handful of thoughts. I, having kids at Conan, you know, I'm, I'm in there a fair amount, so I see the issues. Like, the art room is in a very convoluted path, you know, in a very old modular unit, and you wouldn't be able to find it except for all the little arrows that kind of help lead you along. So obviously, this really needs to be done. I would argue it makes sense to just stay in the pipeline, especially knowing that construction costs are kind of doubling every year or two. I know, like, windows and doors are crazy expensive right now, air conditioning units. I guess, you know, a couple of thoughts on community support. I've heard people wanting justification for spending money on these studies and why can't, you know, people in-house do them? So I think that's a question that needs to be answered. I don't hear a lot of people complaining about the Boardwalk Campus. It seems like now that it's done, people are very proud of it. I do wonder if the solar panels need to be finished, if that counts as part of the finishing of that before we'd be able to move forward, if that impacts the timeline. And then my other question is really around bond rates, because I know that we got a very low rate when that was built. And now we're, you know, very high rates right now, so, you know, it's hard to forecast, but I would hope in two to three years, they would be better. But if we have to take them out before then, I think that certainly should factor in.
Great considerations. Ben?
Does anybody know what the current bond rates are for municipal bonds?
Five-ish percent? I think they're in the five-ish percent. I think they, they had gone up a little higher and it started to come down again where it's becoming more, more feasible, but I don't have the, the current answer for that.
The last time I checked was four, but that was.
Was it four? Okay.
That was a while back.
Yeah.
Sort of a thought, and, you know, this is, it's certainly a struggle, but, you know, kind of coming back to we are the advocates for the students, I'm almost leaning more toward like staying in the pipeline. There's no guarantee that they would even, you know, pull our card and say, this is something, you know, that we would need your interest on for this year. So it's possible, you know, that we could just be in the pipeline again and not have anything come of this. You know, it might just, the other thing is like, you know, we could just kind of kick this can down a little bit, stay in the pipeline, and then deal with that bridge if we come to it. Not ideal, but.
I've had, you know, I would suggest that the committee approach the decision to submit as though if you submit, you'll be selected. I think we're that close.
Okay.
I don't think it would be good to be selected and then pull out.
Correct.
That, because that, what they're doing by selecting one district is they're not allocating funds to another district. So, you know, they have limited funds, they can't get to most of the projects that they want to on an annual basis. And so when they select you, they're pushing everyone else down the pipeline. But I, I think you're close enough that you should assume, and you could be wrong, but I think you should assume you'll be selected so that you understand what, what happens after.
I've never seen this happen. I just want to be clear, there's no possibility of like deferring like college admission if we were to get our ticket pulled, right?
I, I don't believe so. In fact, I think if, if we do, that's probably a worse sign than, should we not submit for a year?
I think if you get close and defer before they select, there's probably no harm. But if you wait until after you're selected and it's made public and they've told everyone else no, I don't think that's a great look.
Lakshmi.
So I'm a little confused about this. I think a few days ago, we were talking about shutting the Conan's campus altogether, right? So from that, we came to building this. That's just a question. I don't, I don't know the answer to it or expect that you would be able to answer. So the second question is, what, what does, I mean, how does our enrollment profile look? Are we looking at growing numbers of students where we would need that school? And in that case, we probably should consider having that school fixed, built, rebuilt, whatever, right?
So I can actually, sorry. Go ahead.
And if that's the case, then if we don't even have money for, what's that term that we said?
Feasibility.
Feasibility study, then where do we go from there? If we go, I mean, it looks like we lose an opportunity here to get funding, but then we don't even have funds. So what does the projection look like? When would we need those funds? And would we be able to build that, build the reserves to fund that? I think all those numbers should be kind of looked at first, and then probably to kind of get to the community, we should at least tell them what, the timelines, the tax burden, all those, at least some kind of rough projections.
Okay. Had to write them down. So the, the first comment and question around whether or not we know what we're going to do with Conan, that's one of the big questions I think that the committee is going to be wrestling with over the course of next year. And so we're looking at putting together that, that working group to sort of look at what, how do we want to structure, particularly at the elementary level, our, our district? So I think we heard pretty loudly from the, the, the boards and committees from the town that they didn't want us to, they didn't want to see us shuttering that school. And in both our A and B budgets, we, we have no intention of doing that. So I think that you bring up a good point, which is, we don't necessarily know how we may structure our buildings in the future, but there was a pretty strong feedback from both the community and the, the town's leadership to keep the building. So that, that was one. The second one was around a feasibility study. So what would happen is if we don't have the, the money in reserves, we would go to the towns, and as part of a building project, we could do a debt exclusion. And that's the vote that we would have to go to both towns, and that would be, we would say to them, we need to, we need to, you know, have a special assessment of a million dollars to be able to do the feasibility study or whatever the funding amount is. And that's the point at which the towns then at a vote get to choose whether or not they want to fund that, that, that excluded debt, which then gives a real indication of how much support there is for the project moving forward. And then I'm going to turn to either Peter or Andrew and talk a little bit about our enrollment projections for the next decade. Can we, let's get through these questions, and then we'll come to, to yours, Vikram.
So in terms of projection enrollments, right now, we're actually right at the point where, at least enrollment-wise from an elementary level, next year is supposed to go down maybe about thirty students from this year. And then after that, the enrollments, which obviously can shift over time, are supposed to semi-flatline. which obviously can shift over time, are supposed to semi-flatline and then slowly creep up. So right now, next year's enrollment projection is for about 2,500 elementary-age students. In 2033, 2034, so in about nine years, the projection is 2,644 students. So in nine years, it'll slowly creep to about 150 more than we have now. So we aren't projected after next year to go any lower, but over the course of 10 years, maybe an extra 15 to 20 students per year over the next nine years at the elementary level.
There's a lot going on here. It seems there's sort of a black box about this, right? So we have no idea how, I mean, you know, we could say, well, you know, we just had this override and can, you know, does that, it seems like that's not going to come into play at all. So we really don't know about that. But I think it is, it would be sort of a tough sell, I think, after, you know, this override to next year, then we need this. On the other hand, we should really be playing the long game here, which is, look at the incredible cost savings we have from this new building, right? The more buildings we have that we're saving that much money, and this is like, for the long term, right? 20, 30 years, we're saving, you know, in, you know, immense amounts of money by putting in a new building that's really this efficient. So I think that is a huge selling point to the public, and we can say, hey, look at the Gates and Douglas boardwalk and how much money we're saving there. So I think if it does come to that next year, I think we would prepared, be prepared to sell it to the public fairly well, I would think. And there's always the hope that they don't choose this next year, but the following year, and then I think it would be even easier, obviously.
Real quick question. First, what is the timeline between the submission and when we would hear back? That's number one. Based off of that timeline, would we see, like, a debt exclusion come before both town meetings this year, or would it be as early as next year, or maybe the year after? Because that, that would color my, my choice of moving forward now or not.
If you submit this spring, they will shortlist schools in September and choose to visit some schools. They would not visit us again because they've already visited. And we would hear at the end of November, very early December, at which point there'd be an expectation that we would be finding an OPM and going to town meetings for feasibility study that spring.
Okay, so, obviously not this year.
One year from now, so which, you know, quite, it's also the same time Boxborough was probably looking at an override.
An override, right.
Other thoughts? Becca?
I did want to add that there's sort of a discussion also on the town side about the DPW building. So it's possible that they'll be going for a capital override at some point in the future for that. It might make sense to do these at the same time.
Just a quick question. I know you guys did coffee hour last week, and you have another one coming up on Saturday. Do you think it would be wise to, like, bring that up sort of in the community and see what people think? Because on one end, a committee's job is to advocate for students. On the other end, we don't want to be out of touch from the community, keep coming back and asking for more money. So, but people who may hesitate to accept the operational right may feel differently about paying for a building, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can definitely ask, but we, we need to, we need to make a decision this evening so that we can prepare the materials. I, I'll give you, you know, like I said, I've, I've been sort of on the fence of both sides about this. Honestly, what I would tell you, what, or where I'm at, is that, sort of playing off of what you said, Yenchen, we, we are responsible for the, the, the students in the district and in the community. And I think the worst thing that we could do for them is to not pass the override this year. And that's, that to me is sort of like the biggest concern I have, second only to not being able to pass an operation, sorry, a debt exclusion to fund the new building, because that will for sure put us towards the back of the line. So, you know, I, I toured all the buildings seven years ago when we started looking at this. Conan is clearly in need of, of being addressed. Peter's right, we spent a lot of time already looking at that and citing for that, that location. So there's a lot done. And we've been doing our due diligence to get into the, the pipeline. I don't want to get out of that pipeline, but I, like, if it's, if it's a couple of years of getting back in the pipeline versus the, the B budget, that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Any other comments or questions? Lila?
David, I hope you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like I watched the select board meeting and they got a, a bond rating under 3%. Am I wrong? Okay, I'm right.
Got a thumbs up.
So, like, recently, so.
The only problem with that is that the bonds, the ratings would change, and it would be like a year from now that we would do that. And I also, I feel like I agree with you that I think it's probably better to wait to get back in the pipeline.
All right. So I'm, I'm looking for a consensus. We don't need a vote, but a con, yes, Peter, please.
I, I'll, I'll just weigh in. It's obviously your decision, but I'm just going to give you my suggestion. Adam just said, you know, his top concern is getting the override this year. And then obviously, you know, could we fund a building project? I would put funding and building project third, because we have to get an override enacted in this year, and then an override in Boxborough next year. And knowing how the assessment present, projections play out based on enrollment, if Boxborough is limited to a 3% assessment, that's of more significant impact on the total district budget than what you're seeing this year. Just to be really clear about that, like, so I, I would say, obviously, like, this year is the urgency, next year is just as significant in terms of impact on schools. So, you know, there's that element of it. Second, I think you have now committed to undertaking kind of a thoughtful study process to how you want to organize elementary schools. I think whatever you choose to do with Conan, having completed that process and gotten community support around it and been transparent in that process, is going to lead to a stronger decision than for the, what you do with Conan in terms of moving that forward in a building project. And so I think by waiting this year and, and not submitting, you can go through that study process, have a real commitment to how you're organizing elementary schools, and then choose what you want to do with Conan after that. I think that might be a, I, I think from the outside in, I think community members would see that as a logical process.
Thanks. All right. So I'm looking for nods of heads of people who are okay with us not submitting this year. Yep? Okay. I think we have our answer there. Thank you, everyone. All right. So I'm going to rewind a bit. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented before this last conversation?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so Lila made the motion and Vikram seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. Sorry we missed that. Moving on now to our school committee communication goal update. So I'll, I'll start. Peter and I held a community coffee on Friday at KJ's Cafe. Peter and I spent a lovely time together. We did have two parents come join us. We looked like a nice couple, Ginny, thank you. Two, two parents did come chat with us for a little bit. It was informative. Hopefully we'll head to more people on a Saturday when it's not during working hours. So it, that was a good opportunity. And most of what we talked about was just sort of a little bit of context about how we got to the budget situation that we're in, what we're doing to, to try and fix that. A little bit about turf fields came up as well. So just, it was a great opportunity to get feedback basically on any topic that came on anybody's mind. And then the other thing that I will share is that Peter and I, Liz, and a couple other school administrators participated in a program in Boxborough this weekend called Strengthening Community and Police Partnerships, or Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships. So sort of a visioning session for the Boxborough Police Department about what they see as, oh, sorry, Lakshmi, you were there as well? No, you were there as well. And, and what I will share is that as a, as a group of school-oriented people, we had a really good visioning session about what works well in policing in, in Boxborough and where we see some opportunities for improvement. And definitely, there was some alignment across the board that we need to have sort of a better defined way of interacting with the Boxborough Police Department with the schools. But some also great feedback from one of our assistant principals in one of the buildings about the, 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 one of the officers that we work with there about reaching out to families and making sure that we have a, a really good partnership with them. So it was, it was a really good session. I was, I was pleased. Liz or Lakshmi, anything you want to add on that?
I think, I think it was very good.
Boxborough has a new canine unit, and she is absolutely adorable. Her name is Coda. Well, she's a, she's a canine unit, so that's, that's just like the official, it's a dog. Yeah.
What kind of dog is she?
A black lab.
She's a black lab.
Black lab, oh.
She's so cute.
Okay, so we're going to go back to the school committee communication goal update. Becca?
I had another lovely visit to the senior center last Tuesday, and it went really well. We had, I believe, around six people come. David Martin from the select board also joined me, which was great, because he could answer questions about the town side of the budget process. And Steve Noon was also there, so he was able to provide, you know, perspective on HIT, but also just sort of past doings, which was really great to have like a good holistic conversation. And it was just like a really good, open and honest dialogue. People wanted to know how we've approached the budget process. Have we looked under every rock and, and every nook and cranny, and have we been creative? And what are we doing for some of those more forward-thinking structural changes? So, you know, that was really great. There was interest expressed in a visit to the Boardwalk Campus. People were really excited about that, and, you know, to see the fruits of good tax revenue stewardship. So I encouraged folks to email Peter to set that up. I don't know if you can do it during the school year, or if you have to wait till the summer, but I thought that was cool, that people really wanted to see it.
Thank you. Yenchen?
I had two Fridays at the Acton Town Hall Office Hour, and I've had a couple visitors. It's very interesting, because in the middle of this budget discussion, it's very stressful. But the visitor, the visitors I've received last week actually looked to the future, talking about, you know, elementary school, the task force that's going to look into the possible restructure of the elementary school organizations. And they had some good suggestions. And also, they pointed out there are a few studies we already have. So that's good information for me as a newbie. I do have a request. Tomorrow morning at Town Hall, we have 10 to 12 as the office hour. I'm not going to be able to make it. I was wondering if somebody else will help out.
Anybody available tomorrow from 10 to 12?
I could do a half hour, like, from 10 to 10:30 or 10:45, so.
Thank you.
Great. Any other updates on community outreach, community communication? Lila?
And our office hours are centrally located on our budget page, which is also centrally located on our district website at the top. We also have office hours at the Sargent Memorial Library on Thursday afternoons, 2:30 to 3:30. And ABW is still open to volunteers, and so I've been going and doing crafts with kids at the shelter, and that's a lot of fun. So if you want to get connected, reach out to them. I also went to Open Door Theater's Wizard of Oz. It was phenomenal. Their interpreters are just beautiful. I don't know how else to say it. And it was one of the most inclusive, just like spaces I've been in and act in. So highly suggest going if you can. And I think that's it. Except that, my school committee social media pages have a link tree in the bio, and there are plenty of really helpful links to the school district website, to videos directly about the budget that Peter's developed, and a bunch of other fun resources. So go there if you need some direction.
Thanks, Lila. Okay, on to subcommittee member reports. We're going to do policy, then capital, then budget.
All right, policy met last week, and I appreciate all of the members of the committee for joining me on my commute into Boston. That was a fun one. But sort of, we have been setting sort of the new direction that we're going to be going. And we initially were planning to address the student resource force proposal that they have diligently been talking about at the beginning of most of our meetings. We were originally going to address that in May, and we've actually pushed that up, and we will be inviting Kate, our energy manager, to discuss with us, I think she already left, to discuss with us at our next meeting on March 20.
Thank you. Capital.
The Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee Capital Improvement Subcommittee convened via Zoom on March 13, 2024. The meeting began with an approval of the previous minutes, followed by updates on ongoing projects. Mark Hamill provided insights on the Parker-Damon Buildings Control System project. Brendan discussed the tennis court repairs, highlighting the need for cracked ceiling and repainting of the junior high courts, and more extensive repairs on the high school courts. Other updates included updates to the high school chem storage, and progress to this building's roof replacement. Lastly, additional discussions revolved around the Hagar Well project and the cell phone tower proposal for improved communication services. Meeting adjourned at 7:58 a.m., with the next meeting scheduled for May 15, 2024.
Thank you. And budget?
The budget subcommittee met on March 18 at 3:30 p.m. on Zoom. We invited members of the finance committees from both towns to attend and spent our time looking at budget projections for the next three years in an effort to anticipate costs and see where we could best use our energy creating structural change. There are some, there are some options for moving forward, but none of them are short-term budget solutions. So, you know, we're really committed to long-term fiscal responsibility and close collaboration with the FinComs and select boards from both towns, and want to ensure that we make the best choices after thorough research and reflection. We'll meet again on April 1st on Zoom. There will be a time change due to my schedule change, so committee members can expect an email about that. And as always, I encourage everyone to email us or come to speak up at meetings, because this is a collaborative process with the community, and we want to hear from you. Also, please remember that we're all in this together, and we should be focusing a portion of our efforts on looking to state and federal governments to provide a more fair share of the fiscal budget to support children and families. Educated children are a vital asset for the future of our country, and we should get more than we currently do. And our elected, our elected representatives are hard at work advocating for us and will continue to fight. As Lila said, you know, we have a wealth of information on the district website, short videos by Peter, and Acton TV's YouTube channel also has a lot of videos of our meetings and Budget Saturday, so folks can sort of see how this process has moved along. We all want strong schools, happy and healthy kids, and an excellent education in this district.
Thank you. All right, on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda do not usually require discussion approved by one vote unless any member would like to hold an item. If you would, please say hold. You remember, you don't need to be at a meeting to vote on its minutes. So item number one is approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of February 10, 2024. Item number two is the recommendation to approve a $25,000 check for the 14th installment from Dragonfly Theater to the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. And item number three is a recommendation to approve the Blanchard PTF $95,580.87 donation to the Blanchard Playground Project Play 24.
So moved.
Seeing that no items were held, we there was a motion by Lila and a second by Ben. All of those in favor? Any opposed? None? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Lila?
Can I just say thank you to Beth for producing 10 pages of notes for Budget Saturday? Much appreciated.
Indeed. With, with gratitude, as we used to say. Finally, statement of warrants and a recommendation to approve. If everyone's reviewed the warrants, we're going to rock, paper, scissors to the front table here to see who's going to make the motion.
You took that other big, long one. I can take this one now.
All right.
I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling $2,878,455. AP vendor warrants as follows, 24-018B dated March 7, 2024, in the amount of $266,859.85. 24-09BL dated March 14, 2024, in the amount of $1,067. 24-019SH dated March 14, 2024, in the amount of $22,001.76. 24-019A dated March 14, 2024, in the amount of $255,893.90. Payroll vendor warrant as follows, 24-018PR dated March 7, 2024, in the amount of $550,138.73. And payroll warrant as follows, P2418. in the amount of $550,138.73. And payroll warrant as follows, P2418/P2418V dated March 7th, 2024 in the amount of $1,782,493.76.
So moved.
Seconded.
So Liz with the motion and Ben with the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you as well. Uh, all right. Before anybody packs up their stuff, I need you to write these dates down. June 21st, June 24th and June 25th, try to hold one of those dates and we're going to send a poll out shortly for our summer workshop. So that's basically immediately after school ends. Um, we want to get our summer workshop in while things are still fresh in everybody's mind. Um, again, that's June 21st, 24th or 25th. We'll send a poll out shortly to see, um, if we can, uh, get, uh, the committee together for our summer workshop very early. Um, the only thing that I see on the FYI is the community coffee that Peter and I are hosting, uh, uh, this Saturday at 9:00 AM at KJ's Cafe. Um, with that is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, you have more FYIs than what's on the packet here. Go for it, Peter.
You know, um, one, just a little color on that, that summer workshop. Um, Adam and I, thinking ahead to some of the, the challenges and opportunities that we really need to tackle, um, had been engaged with the discussion with Nate Levinson. Um, if you remember, a number of years ago, we did a social emotional program review, um, through district management group. Um, Nate is not only a former superintendent in Arlington, but he's also a former school board member. Um, and he has his own consulting firm now. He's a former engineer and does a lot of design thinking as well. But he has a book called Smarter Schools, Smarter Budgets, which is essentially a look inside structural challenges of school budgets and, you know, where you can look within a school budget to really maximize outcomes for students and do it in an efficient way. So what we were hoping to do was get you copies of those books in advance, have kind of a group read around that. We're going to be doing the same thing with our leadership team. Um, and then have Nate come in and actually do a workshop. So the three dates that you got were the three dates he happens to be available. Um, he's absolutely fantastic. He, you know, advises whole states. He's been doing work for every school district in the state of Vermont around literacy. He's doing the same thing. Um, I think in Louisiana and the South, so he's that level of presentation. He's very, very good at what he does. Um, very, very smart and insightful, and I think you'd enjoy that. So that's, that's why we're looking for those dates soon. Um, because we need to book him and, and commit to him. So that's one. And then I also just want to share, you know, I, I forgot to mention it earlier, but we have a new school resource officer, uh, joining us in Acton. I'm really excited. Um, you know, we, you know, had, had a lot of discussions with our SRO subcommittee about what we want out of a program. Um, and so Acton had an opportunity to hire a resource officer. They involved several of our administrators in that process, um, to be able to get feedback from us. And the officer that was selected, um, she has a bachelor's degree in psychology and sociology, uh, with a minor in women's studies from the UMass, from UMass Boston. She, prior to becoming an officer for the last 11 years, actually worked for the Department of Children's and Families as a caseworker, um, for five years. So I think in terms of really understanding students and families in a lens that is, you know, kind of the bridge between schools and outside agencies, she's going to bring a lot of support. So we're excited about that selection. Um, she's starting to, you know, visit the schools now. She completed all of her training, um, that was required and, and moving forward. So just want to make that announcement.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I think so.
Seconded. Yenchen, did you have something you wanted to?
I, I have a request. Uh, 21st, can we take that off the table? It's a state tournament.
Well, we're going to send out a poll and we'll see whoever we can get the most people for.
This is my like secret request to you guys.
All right. So moved.
Seconded. All right. Vikram moved, Ben seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Better not be. Any abstentions? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.